City Council Caucus to Order. The first item on the agenda is our Business Spotlight. Mr. Bob Kirkwood is here. Thanks for joining us, Bob.
Gary, you okay? Thank you very much for having me. So my name is Bob Kirkwood and my company name is Bob's Original Sweeper Shop. And thank you for having me here tonight to announce and kind of help promote that we are celebrating our 50th year in business. We're 50 years of successful business in Northern Kentucky and our home right here at Ehrleranger. I think I look pretty good for my age, don't you? Yeah, just kidding. Matter of fact, now I'll get you to scroll, start scrolling down a little bit if you don't mind. So a little further down, starting right here, you go. So I kind of thought I'd start with a little bit of history real quick and try to not bore you with a lot of details. But so my dad started the business back in 1971. Interesting, he actually did many things through his years, you know, early years of life and then actually sold Kirby's door-to-door. I was just talking to Mr. Skidmore about his old Kirby. He sold Kirby's door-to-door for years and then kind of transitioned into a sweeper shop, a full-blown back store, back shop. You can see the top picture there shows the old building on the hill over there. He bought that back in, you know, late 60s, early 70s and we redid it for the sweeper shop. And I started literally as about an eight-year-old working in the business. So I pretty much grew up around there and that's all I've ever done. In 1971, bought that business or opened the store in Ehrleranger. Through the years, we've kind of gone through a lot of different changes. And I'll kind of do this, a quick recap on a few of those things. One being the name. We started out as Tri-County Kirby when my dad was selling Kirby's. Tri-County Sweeper, you can maybe read the sign there of the first, the old sign up on top. And then for years, we were Kirkwood Sweeper Shop when I worked with my brother who has stores in Ohio. And as unfortunately, as family businesses can happen sometimes, we no longer work together. So about 2017, I rebranded and renamed my store Bob's Original Sweeper Shop and that's where we are today. We also transitioned into several things with new locations. We opened our Campbell County store in 1982 in Highland Heights and then moved into Cold Spring in about 2000. We opened a store in Florence in 1999 and then I bought a building and we reopened a new location right across the street, Candy Corner across the street in 2017. And then one of our big milestones is in '03, we rebuilt the store in Ehrleranger, which if you scroll all the way down for me, there you go, actually right, there you go. That is our, that is our location right now. The new is a 5,000 square foot building around on the highway, kind of neat with the, I can't remember the grant that I also took part in, but the facelift grant, I think is what they call it.
The legacy.
The legacy grant. It was neat because you guys actually featured our store, picture of our store on the front of there. I thought that was really cool. Thank you. So anyway, you know, and then, you know, back right about a year ago, COVID happened, you know, and of course, the whole COVID pandemic has turned a lot of businesses upside down and unfortunately, a lot of businesses didn't survive. Interesting enough though, we, so we closed our Florence and our Cold Spring location right off the bat. We continued to operate out of Ehrleranger on a curbside basis for the first couple months. And we weren't quite sure what to expect, but praise God, thanks be to God, we got busy and, you know, people were home. People, you know, they needed to clean, they needed, you know, the home projects started happening, you know, cleaning closets out, you name it, they were cleaning. So that actually helped our business very well. So that and then also we repair sewing machines as well and I don't know if any of you guys have, I'm sure you've heard the stories about ladies who got, or even guys who got out sewing machines and started sewing masks because there was a shortage of masks. And so we were getting a lot of sewing machine repairs. So interesting enough, pandemic actually has, we've survived and thrived through the pandemic. Praise God for that. You know, it's by the grace of God and a lot of hard work, we've managed to do pretty well through the pandemic. So I just kind of wanted to touch on some of the things that we do. Bob's Original Sweeper Shop, you know, sweepers, vacuums, that's kind of our mainstay. We sell service, repair, you know, take care of all sorts of vacuum cleaners, any type of cleaning equipment you could possibly imagine from vacuums, of course, hardwood floor cleaners, you know, the big floor machines, the commercial floor machines, to carpet cleaners, extractors, things like that. Everything from, you know, your basic vacuum all the way up to a ride-on or walk-behind big floor machine that you might see him use in a, you know, like a grocery store or something at night. So that has been, we've been doing that for so long and that's been a great mainstay for us. And then we also sell and serve, or sell supplies for all of that equipment, parts, bags, belts, everything that you might need to maintain a machine or anything. We also sell all types of cleaning equipment, or cleaning supplies and materials to clean with and that, glass cleaners, furniture polish, hardwood floor cleaners, you name it. I kind of have a little saying, I've always said to customers through the years, when it comes to cleaning, we've got the equipment or the product to help you do a really good job and do it right. But we also, some add-on things that we've done through the years now too is for many years, we've been selling and servicing the infrared heaters. I think several of you guys have maybe got some of those heaters from us or we've repaired heaters for you. We repair sewing machines. We don't yet sell sewing machines. That may be something we might consider to do in the future, but at this point, we do repair sewing machines. An area of our business that we are really trying to grow and has been really a good, good part of our business for many years is installing, selling and repairing central vacuum systems. We do new construction homes. We work with builders, many of the builders in the area we work with to install new, you know, existing, I'm sorry. Let me, let me stop. We, we work with a lot of builders to install central vac systems in new construction homes, but we also install systems in existing homes. A lot of people say that because their home's already built, they can't have a central vac system, but we do install, you know, quite a few systems in existing homes. There, 90, 95% of the homes out there, we can install a central vac system and we have been doing it for a long time. So a new, a really neat new product on the market in the central vacuum industry and central vacuum world is the height of those retractable hose systems. Those are fast becoming a really great option and people are falling in love with that. It makes it so convenient because you don't have to handle the hose, it retracts in and out of the wall for you. It's very simple to work with, so really great. So thank you very much for letting me come for my little presentation. And I want to thank many of you, many of you guys are regular customers of ours. I really, really, really appreciate that. You know, we're based right here in Ehrleranger, but we cover the whole tri-state area and, you know, we've been, you know, 50 years of success and a lot of the thanks, all that thanks goes to our loyal customers and many of you as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Well, Bob, the city has a proclamation for you that I'll go ahead and read. Gary, do you mind turning off the mic, please? To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas 50 years ago, Ron Kirkwood opened his sweeper shop in Ehrleranger, Kentucky. It has since grown to become a successful family-based business. Bob's Original Sweeper Shop has provided Ehrleranger and surrounding communities with exceptional customer service. Bob's Original Sweeper Shop gives the community a place to not only purchase household items such as vacuums and service for, and service for repairs, but to establish relationships and trust. Bob's Original Sweeper Shop's staff have a committed, commitment to service and offer support after the sale. Bob's Original Sweeper Shop treats each customer respectfully, fairly and professionally. The mayor of Ehrleranger, Kentucky would like to congratulate Bob's Original Sweeper Shop on 50 years and wish them continued success. Now therefore, I Jessica Fetti, Mayor of the City of Ehrleranger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim March 17th, 2021 to be Bob's Original Sweeper Shop Day in Ehrleranger and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Ehrleranger on this day, March 16th, 2021. Thank you, Bob.
Mayor, before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to, little story from last year. In, in March, we had our vacuum that we had bought from, from Bob back in 2003 and it broke and we figured it was the pandemic and they were closed and we would try to fix it ourselves. So in June, we took a box apart and, and Bob put it back together and did the repair. So they can pretty much fix anything there.
That's awesome, Gary. Thank you. And not only do you have your business in the city of Ehrleranger, but you also are a longtime resident of the city of Ehrleranger. So we all grew up together in Woodland Hills with your kids. So longtime family friend, appreciate the friendship. All right, next on the agenda is Public Works office space, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this, I think in December, just that we've been discussing Public Works and the future down there. The last, I guess, three weeks ago during the heavy snow and ice, Public Works, I guess, fell victim again to the building down there. Peter's office flooded again and the more and more we discussed it, you know, we've been trying not to spend a lot of money on that building, but it's gotten to the point where we are going to have to do something. So we did reach out to look for some temporary space for Public Works and we found some next door here at the, what's it called? Sorry. Yeah, Ehrleranger City Center. So there's a 13, almost 1300 square foot office available over there. It's got four offices in it, it's got a common area where they can have plane reviews and other things from citizens or businesses. There's also an area for two cubicles and a kitchenette along with an actual working bathroom, which is awesome for Public Works. The cost a year is $20,769. Next council meeting, we would request that that be approved for the mayor to sign a one-year lease to get them out of that area down there while we were figuring out the permit solution for Public Works. But we feel it's, it's been time now to go ahead and get them into a safe environment so they can continue operations without having to worry about all the mold that is constantly being, I guess, put into that building with the water on all ends of that building. So just wanted to bring this everybody's attention, see if anybody has, any council has any comments about that or questions that we can answer. Gary?
Can you repeat what that amount was?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be 1,730.78 cents a month. And that's for 1,271 square foot.
And I guess just to round that, do we, I'll assume that we don't have any other space within the city where we could do that. I know, I guess I did see, you know, the Railroad Depot Museum is going to reopen. I know that there is a large room back there. Is that something that would be suitable for a short period of time?
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be adequate for what they need. You know, we looked at a couple of different locations around the city of our own property and it wouldn't accommodate their needs, any kind of upgrades, you know, they wouldn't be able to handle the different locations to even upgrade to get them offices and things like that. So.
And then the lease cost is 1,730. Are there additional fit-outs that need to be done there as well then?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Is there any additional development or construction that needs to be done to fit out the space to be suitable for our needs?
Just, just a couple things that they're going to cover. It's not going to be any expense to us, it's all included with the price. But yeah, there is one area that they're going to have to section off to make that fourth office, which we negotiated with them that they're going to cover. And then also the two cubicles they're going to build as well. So we're able to have four separate offices that have doors and then an area for the crew leads to be able to operate out of.
The, is it a flooding issue down there or is it just a, I mean, obviously it's a consistent water issue. Do we know what flood zone that is down there? I mean, I know it's a low-lying area.
Yeah, I don't think it's a flood zone. It does, it is, the base of the building is right at the bottom of a, of a hill and that's where.
Right, I understand.
That's where that sidewall takes in water, but then just, you know, the roof and everything kind of floods right into Peter's office.
And we feel like these are things that can be fixed when we redevelop the, or we rebuild?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it'll, yeah.
I mean, obviously it'll take some, some work, but we do feel like that's something that can be resolved.
Right, I, you know, we're still, I doubt that building is going to be used anymore. You know, that's, that building is most likely going to be just condemned and shut down. They're just, putting any more money into that is, from what we're looking at, is just a waste even in evaluation of it.
Right, I'm just thinking more of if we continue on that land, I mean, the land, the elevation of the land is not going to change by.
Correct.
A significant amount. So if it's a true flooding issue, that may or may not change just by rebuilding on the same property.
I see what you're saying now.
Yeah.
It would be, all the plans that we've even discussed right now, it would not be putting a building on that.
Okay, I understand.
In that exact area.
Got it, okay.
Because of the water.
Because of the elevation, okay.
And any, anything that would be built, obviously there's going to be more mitigation for drainage that wasn't put there years ago.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Dana?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of meeting with Peter on the site just to see what everybody was talking about and I encourage any other council members that have not understood what's going on to get with Peter and schedule an appointment because I really think this is long overdue.
Thank you. Gary?
Yeah, just one last question. I know that there's, I guess, the issues that are there presently, is fixing those, what would the cost of fixing those issues be to just to stay in that facility versus the renting?
I know it'd be over 50,000, between 50 and 100,000 to make the bathroom functional out of there. And then, you know, we, we debated on doing any kind of mold investigation, mitigation and we just feel that at this point, it's just not worth spending the money to even do that, due to the condition of the building. Yes, ma'am?
Now, is this just office space?
Yes.
Okay, is it just right down here?
Yeah, it's just the next building over. It's one of the condos there that we're able to lease.
Well, that kind of worked out then, didn't it? It's convenient.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of benefits, you know, part of the biggest benefit is it's moving ready, you know. Any other facility, we would have to do massive overhaul and try to get some sort of a working area and, you know, in this situation, we're just not going to have to deal with that. So it is convenient.
Now, is this a certain timeframe to give us time to do something better or is this just kind of open-ended?
Well, this will be, we're signing a year lease is what we're asking council to approve the mayor to sign. So it would be a year lease and then, you know, we're hopefully in the next couple of months have a good idea of the plan moving forward. Any other questions on that? Okay, I will email the full lease out and the layout just so council has a chance to review it and then I'll be asked for it to be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
With the, with the lease only being $20,000, why does council need to approve the lease?
Because the mayor, mayor needs approval to enter into a lease from council. Thank you. All right, next up I'll have Chief Whitaker come up and talk about the surplus of Rescue 74. Generally, we don't discuss these, but this is a larger piece of equipment and I thought it'd be good to have council have an idea of why we're surplus in such a large piece here without a replacement.
I haven't put my glasses on, I still can't see. Rescue 74, for those that are unsure what it is, there's the original picture taken in July of 2003. It's a rescue unit. Go to the next slide, it'll kind of. The history of a rescue unit for this fire department. In 1995, they had a confined space rescue team that was formed here. And in '99, Ehrleranger, Point Pleasant and Florence formed a regional technical rescue team. Technical rescues are missing persons, confined space, swift water, rope rescues, things that kind of go above and beyond and need specialization. In 2002, the rescue truck that Ehrleranger Fire Department had was involved in an accident. And in 2003, the truck that we're talking about tonight was purchased. The technical rescue team still exists in the area regionally, but not on the scale that it once does. Many of the specializations have been farmed out to other areas. Alexandria takes care of large animal rescue, Hebron does swift water. So a lot of that has been farmed out. The teams act, or exist, but it's really truly not active. The last time the unit was really used was back in 2013 when Mr. Lemming there was checked off on driving it for part of the special response team. But now, of course, as you're well aware, the special response team is done by Kenton County SWAT. So next slide, please. Regional history on top of that, everybody had a rescue truck back in the day, it was just something they did. I actually drove the old butter nut bread truck that Covington had. Fort Mitchell had one, Elsmere, Independence, every unit had, every department had one of these units. Currently only Alexandria and Covington have them today. Currently, only Alexandria and Covington have them today, and I believe Covington is the only one that manns it. So why don't they have any rescue units anymore? The jaws of life, ropes, cribbing for automobile accidents. They're carried now on our first-response engines. That's why they call them rescue pumpers. A lot of that equipment that's used most of the times carried on your frontline engines. Add to that the fact that that's manpower. You'd have to have extra manpower to man that. We know how that goes around the area. Rescue 74 does not have a pump. It's not manned by personnel. It's basically just a big cargo truck at this point. Got some information when I started this compiling in February of this year. You can see the mileage, total mileage for a 15-month period is 207 miles, and the last recorded filling of the tank was in June of 2020. So basically, this unit, although in good shape, and hopefully someone will find a good use for it, is basically just takes space. Doesn't affect anything regionally. It doesn't affect our participation with technical rescue. There she is today. So it's a good shape. It's just not anything that's going to fit with us. So I just ask that, you know, we have the go-ahead to go ahead and surplus the unit. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Is this what other departments have done with the similar trucks that they had? They just surplus them?
I'm trying to, well, Covington, Alexandria have theirs. Fort Mitchell never replaced one. I'm not sure what they did with theirs. I know they no longer have one. I don't believe Edgewood has one any longer. I know Southern, Central Campbell sold their old unit to Covington, maybe 10 years ago. So they've either surplus them or gone by the wayside, but yeah. Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Does it have a useful life left?
I think it does. I think it does. I mean, it could, it's basically just a cargo mover. You know, if you did want to use it for rescue, it would be fine. If you wanted to dedicate to an entity that was specializing in some sort of rescue-type equipment, it'd be perfect to carry that on, or it'd be perfect for a construction company. It has its use. It's about, you can see the mileage had very little usage. So, you know, an 18-year-old truck like that, I think it has a purpose. I do not know about kind of where we're going to price it or what we think the value is. I think everybody's well aware, and it's worth whatever somebody's willing to pay for it. But we really haven't started going down the line of comps to really look at it to see what to list it for. I'd love to sell it, follow the path of the PD, and find another agency here locally that might be able to implement it in their fleet somehow. That would be our choice. I think it is, it's worthwhile for someone.
The only thing I'll add is, you know, the last couple of years, Chief and I have been in a lot of meetings with other cities and Kenton County about regional assets for fire and things that, you know, we need to think about regionally so we're not all buying ladder trucks and things like that. And this is one of the pieces of equipment that nobody needs. You know, we kind of went, I explained given two years ago when we started this, all the equipment that we have, and it's just not needed anymore. You know, the pumpers, it has no water, so it's really a waste of personnel to even take it out to a scene unless it's something spectacular, you know. It's just not, it's just not a need, and right now it's just taking up space, costing more money for insurance and maintenance on it. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Through the surplus process, hopefully someone-
Oh, somebody definitely needs this. It's just not the city of Erlanger. But next, for the council meeting, we will be adding it on the agenda for a sale by electronic means if council agrees on that.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is the amended fiscal '21 budget. We have a couple of items to discuss with you guys today that we are hoping we can bring to the next council meeting. So a few months back, we asked that we allocate $1.2 million to the COVID Business Relief Fund. That was with the anticipation of any business that could potentially qualify if they put in an application and maxed out. That was that dollar amount, that 1.2 million. We have not seen that level of need. So after Emmy has gone through all of the applications, and the window is currently closed, and it is not planning on opening back up. So after reviewing all the applications, Emmy has projected out the rest of the costs for this current fiscal year, which should total approximately $30,000, which leaves a substantial amount left in that budget, that line item. So there are two, two projects that we would like to discuss with you tonight to move forward on within this fiscal year's budget and reallocate those funds to something that we can actually get done or start a project. So the first one, I'm going to call Peter Glenn up. He's going to discuss a little bit about the park conversation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so parks and park planning. So what we're asking for is a budget amendment this evening to kind of help us jump-start next budget year's park infrastructure construction to allow us a jump-start this year to help getting all the design costs completed or close to being completed. You know, currently in the budget year we're in, we have a $250,000 allotment for parks. And, you know, starting July 1, we start the design process, and then that takes, you know, half the year. And then the second half of the year is construction. So it really greatly reduces our construction time. And with any kind of increase of that amount of money would really prove to be difficult getting the design and construction all completed within, you know, one budget year. So what we're asking for is some funding to help start the design phase of next year's park improvement projects.
Mr. Glenn, what is the actual ask amount?
So what we're asking for is $60,000, correct? So we figured that that would be enough money to, about what we could spend the rest of the remaining of this budget year.
Any other questions for Mr. Glenn?
Can you be more specific about what you're going to use it for?
Um-
Or do you know?
Well, kind of yes, kind of no. So, yeah, so this is a moving target that we're trying to hit, you know, going through the budget process right now that we're under. But the intention is to go back to our master plan and start continuing with what we have master-planned to date. So the money would go towards Silver Lake in the next phase of Silver Lake. You know, currently, you know, what we're working on right now is everything from division, kind of going into the park, past the basketball court. So we're improving the road, the curbs, sidewalks, basketball courts, up into that point of delineation. The next phase would be going from there back towards the tennis courts, playground, parking lots, more sidewalk, things like that. And also is the intention to do Rainbow. So go back to the master plan for Rainbow and, and start with the first phase of Rainbow. Rainbow is basically a two-phase project. So it would be doing the playground, basketball courts, walkways, and things like that at Rainbow. Taking down the fencing, improving the fencing, so on and so forth. So that sounds pretty specific, but it's still a little bit general as far as, you know, I'll know more exactly here shortly. But that's, you know, that's the direction we're headed.
And what was the amount again? I'm sorry.
$60,000.
Sixty, okay.
We'll be using BOCs and BOCs engineering for all the design work as we typically do.
I know this isn't necessarily specific to the 60 that you're asking for, but when you're doing the budget planning, are you going to be building in an area for dialogue around the material change that we had talked about in the other meeting to, for the upgrading of the materials?
Absolutely, yes. So, so what we'll do as we now start, you know, with the approval of this budget amendment, we'll start the design process. And part of that will definitely be incorporating, you know, the park task force in that review and input and, you know, and using that task force as a great sounding board for what we're doing and how we're doing it, for sure. Yes.
Well, I guess, I mean, if it's $60,000 and we're doing the budget amendment now, the earliest that we could potentially start to spend that money would be mid-May, right? Because if we're not going to do a budget amendment, the second reading, earliest would be the first week of May. Can't spend it before then because we haven't allocated it, right? I just, not knowing what that total fund is, I mean, I know last year we had, you know, some significant debate over the amount of money that we wanted to put in parks.
Yes, sir.
I would think we would need to reengage that conversation first, at least have a general idea of what we would want to spend, right? Because if we decide, hey, we're not going to spend any money next year, I don't know if that's the answer, but if that's, you know, the direction that we, or we take the similar approach and, hey, we think we're only going to spend $250,000 again, this is really, you know, biased a whole lot. And I guess the second piece on it, though, is I think there's a couple of things you mentioned around the budget amendment. I think with the last municipal order that we said, we would actually have the actual legislation at a caucus meeting before it came to a first reading versus talking about the concept of, you know, the legislation, and then just voting on it as a first reading, you know, in a couple of weeks. And I know that there are specific reasons that we put that in there, so we're just not kind of caught off guard. I know, you know, on the last budget amendment and that first reading, there were things in that one that, that we saw for the first time that night, even though I was helpful in actually putting that initial budget amendment together. So I'm just, you know, concerned that, hey, we say $60,000, and all of a sudden we get there the first night, and we actually haven't, we're having a first reading on something we actually haven't even discussed. So if that's the case, and we don't get, if we have another caucus meeting to discuss the actual proposed legislation versus just the concept of it, that really puts us back almost into June.
Gary, my intention was to have a first reading for the month of the April meeting.
Understood.
And then a second meeting, a second special meeting.
But that Friday would be the first time that we see the actual legislation. And the municipal order that we passed said that the legislation would actually go to a caucus meeting first, which would be-
Would it have been preferred for us to make the legislation and bring it to this meeting prior to discussing with-
Yeah, I just want to make sure what we discuss is actually the, is what actually ends up at that first reading. And without seeing it yet, it's really tough for that to happen. You know, ultimately, council can do whatever they want with this issue. If we put it on for first reading, you can obviously table it. But if we look at the municipal order that was just passed, under 10D legislation procedure, it says, "Legislation may originate from either the executive or the legislative branch. All legislation should first be discussed at a caucus meeting prior to any first reading." Doesn't necessarily say that the actual document is, you know, it's just, it's discussed. Perhaps, but I think we're also just discussing the concept of the legislation, not necessarily the actual legislation, right? I, I think all we've heard so far is that there's been a proposal for $60,000 increase in parks as an amended budget. And I understand your concern. You would like to see that in a red-lined ordinance document. All I'm saying is I don't think that a plain reading of our municipal order requires that. It just requires discussion, which I think is being met tonight. That being said, you obviously could vote to table it if we have a first reading. So I think council needs to be comfortable with whatever approach we take in April. I don't think we want to spin our wheels on that.
Gary, I'll address the first, your first comment about what if we only fund $200,000 next year or something less. The benefit of what we're talking about here with the plans is that plan's going to be good, even if it's a year from now. The problem is, it's really difficult to do the plan and execute it all in the same budget year. So we really want to get to the point, and the only reason we're not at that point now is because of COVID. We took that out of the budget last year just because we weren't sure on the amount. But the goal moving forward is, the year before is the planning phase, the, you know, construction drawings, and then we can execute it at July 1 with the money that council has allotted. And then during the winter months, we can plan again for the following budget. So that's, that's the cycle we would have been on if we wouldn't have reduced the expenses so much last year due to COVID. So what we're trying to do is just get back to that. So I don't think, you know, we're going off, generally it's 10%, so $60,000 is if, if council would approve $600,000 next year. But it's still not a waste. You know, if we, if we do the plan and we can only fund half of it, that's still fine. We'll just carry that over for the next year.
But it's potentially a plan for work that council may never want to do at that specific park.
That's true.
So it could be a waste.
That's true. I mean, that does apply to a lot of things that we do, though.
Any other questions for Mr. Glenn?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. The other project is going to be discussed by Council member Elmore. Go ahead.
I am requesting that, or we're requesting that we allocate $300,000 of the remaining COVID Business Relief Fund to start renovations on the railroad underpass. Our past and future cares federal money would be well spent improving infrastructure within Erlanger. The condition of the underpass has been a recurring topic of conversation with both residents and business owners around the Dixie Corridor. Improving the aesthetics of the bridge should enhance our image, which in turn promotes economic development in Erlanger. As we look to acquire new business, we realize that key decision-makers consider aesthetics while determining where to plant their business. Beautification of the underpass will allow business owners the chance to see exactly what Erlanger has to offer. Of the $300,000, we expect that $195,000 will cover necessary materials such as steel, walls, the lead treatment, traffic control, and paint, which would be a state-approved color, and about $20,000 for the murals. The project should only take three to four weeks from start to finish and have a minimum impact on commute and local traffic. This is something I believe that if council approves, that we can make a speedy and visibly impactful improvement on the city that will bring pride to residents and business owners alike.
Questions? Yes. Can you go over those amounts one more time slowly?
Yeah, sure. So $195,000 estimate for the steel, the walls, like lead treatment, mitigating of lead, traffic control, paint. Huh?
We've been told multiple times there's no lead.
On the steel structure. On the walls, there is not.
There is on the steel structure?
Correct. On the steel structure.
Okay. I've been told conflicting information for a long time about that.
On the walls, there are, there's no lead. We sent away a sample.
I thought it was the bridge itself.
No.
Okay. So, sorry. The lead caught me off guard.
That's fine. It's, it also covers the paint, which is going to be a state-approved color, obvious. And $20,000 should cover the cost of the murals that goes on the sidewalls, the concrete. Rebecca?
At one point in the last few years, there was discussion about the railroad either donating paint or paying for paint as part of the remediation. Where, where, what is, what's the status with what they are willing to contribute to this project?
The railroad wasn't going to contribute the paint. They were going to contribute the flaggers. And we have to revisit that conversation and make sure that they're still willing to, to donate the time and the cost of that. The paint was originally going to be, and Tyson, you can fill in the gaps if I'm missing, but it was going to be given by Sherwin-Williams. And those are still conversations that have yet to be had. So in reality, the ask is probably far more than what the actual cost will be. We actually have a donor that is going to pay for the cost of the- have a donor that is going to pay for the cost of the mural as well. But we want to just make, you know, cover all of our bases and ask for the full amount, knowing that in reality will probably be well under the $300,000.
Excuse me. Have we ex...
Oops.
Did you follow me? Okay. Have we explored grants that are available to remediate the lead paint?
I haven't seen any grants that would, that would do that, probably because it's not, you know, it's owned by the railroad, so.
No. I mean, I know of other cities that have applied for grants that have been, I mean, there's federal grants available. I just didn't know if that had ever been explored in the past.
I haven't seen any come across our desk, and that's, that's something we actively look at, that's the grants.
I would want us to try to look at that, because if there's other federal money out there that will help with the remediation of the lead, that we're not spending this money on.
Okay.
And are we allowed to know who the donor of the murals is?
Arling House is wanting to, so Arling House Heating and Cooling, they were saddened by the cancellation of the summer send-off, and they did want to still do something for 2020. So they are wanting to participate and pay for the cost of the mural.
Is that going to involve advertisement of their business, or is it just a straight donation?
Straight donation, correct.
Is there going to be, I don't even know if it falls within the jurisdiction, but is there a structural or an engineering evaluation of it first before we go and make improvements? Or does that fall within the railroad? And which railroad is that? Is that?
It's Norfolk Southern.
Norfolk Southern, okay. Do they have their own structural engineers and everything to look at it?
Yeah, the only, the only structural we've looked at is the actual walls and ensuring that, that once we do paint them, they're not going to leak. So I know that's been researched and will be part of it.
Okay. Just as long as we have somebody who is engineering, from an engineering standpoint too, to cover our end of it too. We don't want Northern Southern to come back and say, hey, everything was fine until you guys did these.
Correct. That'll be part of all discussions. Thank you.
And I mean, it seems to me there's still a number of unanswered questions and discussion items that are yet to be had. Shouldn't we have those and just have that full package in front of us before we are going to write a check for $300,000?
What are your questions?
I mean, this is just, one, we got to make sure council is approving of the idea, you know, and so that's not writing a check for $300,000. It's just allowing the staff to spend up to that amount of money for this project. But yes, there are, you know, there's a lot more for us to get into and confirm and solve, but we do have, you know, I'd say an 80% solution so far.
So how far before, how long before we would have those, the 20% answered and understand if this is actually a, you know, a $300,000 project or a $100,000 project, depending on the donations and pieces?
Yeah, I would say within a month or two, we would, we would know. I mean, I want to say a month, but you know how it is dealing with, communicating with the railroad. So, you know, that's, we understand there's still limitations here, but before we go through all that and then, you know, present this to council, we just wanted to make sure that council is on board with spending the amount of money.
So do we need to take a vote before we, to proceed with the budget amendment on this one?
I think it would be nice to do a straw poll to gauge appetite before we start, you know. I mean, we've already had a tremendous amount of conversations and work go into it, but before we continue, I think getting a straw poll is good. Tom?
I just want to say, so we've, we've had the discussions. They're willing to discuss this. They're willing to move forward with this. I just know we've, I've been dealing with this a long time, and it'd be great to get that done. I just want to make sure we're not spinning our wheels again.
I'm going to need a lot more information before I'm ready to vote on something like this. Like, I need, I just, I'm not comfortable with a $300,000 amount based on some figures that were just...
What are your questions?
Like, I would like to see these figures in writing, and I would like to know more about the grant availability for the lead remediation. I mean, this may have been discussed for years by previous councils, but not by me as a council member. And so I'm coming in new to this, and I'm not, I mean, obviously, I'm privy to the conversations in the past, but I don't know all the nitty-gritty details of it. So I understand that it's necessary. I'm, I agree that it's necessary, but I'm not so sure that I'm comfortable just jumping into writing a check for $300,000 when I'm not sure that that's really all it's going to be and that there's not other funds available for part of the project.
Well, in regards to your, your conversation about the grant, Matt explained to you that we do on a regular basis, we have a grant writer that's constantly looking at all of the grants that are available for all of the different projects that we have going on in the city. We will bring it up to him as well. But this is, this is one of those projects that it's, it's time. And we need to make sure that we're giving our operations the ability to make those nitty-gritty decisions. So what they're asking for is a, an allotment up to $300,000. It's not, it's not writing a check. When you're putting money into a line item, it's not a blank check. It's for a specific purpose with a, with a task.
Completely understand that it's not a blank check, but I need to be comfortable with the amounts that were not given to us in writing or anything. I mean, I didn't even have a chance to write everything down. So I would just, I would feel a lot better voting on something if I had those fingers ahead of time for that type of project.
Okay. And we're not asking you to vote on it tonight? We're asking you to see if this is something that you're willing to do? Is this a path we want to go down? What's the appetite? Before we start investing a lot more time and effort, we need to know if council has the appetite to make this move. That's what we're asking for a decision on. Steve?
Yeah, I agree with the asking for the appetite, but I think what we have to keep in mind is this is something that was probably needed 20 years ago, to be quite honest with you. It's an eyesore. It's right in the middle of our city. It gives us a really bad look. And any improvements to it are just going to cost more the longer we wait. And the railroad's not going to do anything about it except to maintain what they have for passage. So if we're going to do it, it might be, might be, make best sense to look now and to bring those improvements to the city from a cosmetic standpoint that I think are necessary. Just my thoughts.
So how long is the process to typically, like, to connect with Sherwin-Williams and to connect with the railroad to get confirmation on those, those elements of the project? I mean, I, I mean, it's definitely something that needs to get done. It's just a matter of those, those unanswered questions with regard to, you know, the lead paint grant and if that's even a thing. I mean, so if all we're doing tonight is a, is a straw poll on pursuing, potentially pursuing this project, then if we have those follow-up items, that would be great to get an update on at the next meeting.
That's what we're looking for. Gary?
Yeah, and I guess I would ask, you know, I think I'm there with Ms. Jasper as well, just around wanting, you know, some more detailed information. And then, you know, I think about, you know, what we're attempting to do, but is that, and I, and I get what you say that's an eyesore, but, I mean, the businesses that have still been coming in, I mean, are, can we, can we say that there are specific businesses that said, nope, don't want anything to do with Erlanger because of this railroad? I would say, I mean, we look at the growth and the revenues across, across the board, it doesn't seem that to be the case. And I guess, you know, the question I'm asking myself is, if we're going to, you know, to try to accelerate some projects, is the railroad piece the best thing that we can do? I mean, I think, you know, a coat of paint on the railroad overpass when we still have, you know, other roads that are crumbling, it just seems that that may not necessarily be the best use of accelerating, you know, capital projects.
So Gary, what projects do you want us to do?
I'd rather see us accelerate road development and sidewalk repair.
We've increased the road budget for next fiscal year.
I'd rather see us throw the extra million dollars at it. I mean, we've got, you know, sidewalk issues. We've got, you know, you know, a heavy pedestrian community in parts of the city. We've got sections where sidewalks would be great to have, period. You know, I would like to see some of the roads accelerated as well, but, you know, yes, I, you know, if all of those other things were done and we were still sitting here with, you know, millions of dollars, yeah, okay, let's go after that. But it seems like there's a lot of, at least in my opinion, a lot of other higher priorities than putting a coat of paint on.
So based on the unutilized COVID funds that we've already done a budget amendment for, Peter is asking for 60, and then we're talking about 300 here. So we're looking at, what, 700-ish? Do you, do you have thoughts on what the plan is for that? We might be able to throw that at a road project?
We thought if you had suggestions, we would take suggestions. We weren't going to come to you with the entire remainder all eaten up. I didn't think that was right. So we came to you with a small chunk of it to do some projects that need to get done with money that is not Erlanger taxpayer dollars that came in through our regular sources of revenue. So it was an opportunity to take care of something that has been sitting for a long time. We didn't want to allocate all the dollars.
Just to kind of clarify, I totally get the sidewalk and roads, and if we could do that right now, we would. The challenge is, is there's, you know, this money would have to be spent by the end of June, and there's just no way to design, bid, and construct by, in that timeframe. So, you know, we were only looking at projects that we could actually complete by the end of the year. So the sidewalks and the roadways, unfortunately, at this point is, we don't, we'd have to put that into next year, which is obviously an option.
Tom's, Tom and Jennifer. Tom, do you want to go first?
So, yeah, actually, and this is not about the underpass, this is also about the other money. So I was talking to Emmy earlier, and she was running some of the numbers. Do we have an opportunity to still use some of that money with the businesses if we make some changes in what, how, in the criteria? So I think it would be helpful in some of the smaller businesses. Emmy, was it five or six that could probably meet that? Do you know? So just something to consider too with that money. I think it would still be a small amount, but it would help the local businesses that we're looking at, so, as part of that.
We can discuss that as well. Jennifer?
So I understand the need to accelerate, you know, the projects because we do only have a certain amount of time to spend the money. But it would have been nice if all of council had been privy to this extra money that was going to be available instead of just a couple people, because I would have liked time to think about projects that I would have been interested in proposing tonight as well. But I wasn't privy to that. So, like I said, I understand the need to accelerate it, but I need a little bit of time to think about some things that I might propose as well.
Diana?
I just have a quick question. If we do approve this and the project gets completed this year, what do you anticipate on a yearly budget for maintaining it? Will be any cleaning of the paint, repainting, touch-up? What are budgeted for that or thoughts?
The steel structure is good for 30 years, and the walls are regularly painted. I think Ed Milliken painted the last time, 2015-ish, I believe. So those are a regular, a regular thing that are taken care of in the maintenance budget.
Vicki, did you have a question? Okay. Ryan?
So I actually asked the question if, how much money we had left over in the COVID Care Funds from the federal government. I started asking some questions and was making some suggestions. So it was really just me going and asking, you know, what we have left over and what can we work on? This was an eyesore. Just started asking some questions. That's all it started as.
I completely understand, but if the rest of us were being asked for ideas, it would have been nice to know that we were going to be asked for those ideas ahead of time.
And there's nothing stopping you from giving me your ideas in the next couple of weeks? Sure, sure. That's why I didn't allocate the entire dollar amount. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, I just want to be, I guess, make a comment here. I mean, it's not, these are not use-it-or-lose-it funds. If we choose not to spend any of this money, then it is just general fund of money. It's not like we're giving it back and it's a, you know, spend it by June 30th or you don't have it any longer. We just have it for other things as we go into next fiscal year.
It will then be added to the unreserved pile of money.
Correct.
Which you know is a large sum of money already.
No, I know, I agree. I mean, yes, it is a large sum of money, but we're also, you know, suggesting, I think the one packet that I saw was $10 to $15 million in park development and $22-plus million in other capital buildings. So, you know, it's not like we don't have a laundry list of, you know, capital expenditures that we want to do as well, so.
Any other questions?
Renee?
I'm all for the beautification of the overpass, but when it's all said and done and it's all over, you can't make the road any wider. You can't make the overpass any higher, but you can make it look a little prettier.
And we can make it safer. So part of the, the project plan is putting the, the black and yellow paint back into the middle, and we're using reflective paint to make sure that people can see very clearly. So it would make it a lot safer as well.
So here's, I think, what the clarification, I think we really need two straw polls. I think we need a straw poll on the $60,000 budget amendment and whether that's ready for a first reading in April, and then a straw poll on whether we want a first reading on the $300,000 budget amendment on the overpass. We might as well split the two up.
Okay, so we can go ahead and do the parks first. So if you want to go ahead and raise your hand if you are in support of the $60,000 budget amendment.
In a first reading in April.
In a first reading in April.
I know we have one person who's not.
Okay. You can go ahead on the train still. Okay, and then the other straw poll is the continu-, or do you want to say it, Jack?
Yeah, for the $300,000, it's a first reading in April.
Pending more questions and answers, your concerns? Okay. All right. I appreciate your guys' attention to that, and we'll get your questions answered. And, all right, so next on the agenda is the automatic changeable copy signs in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. And Mr. Meyer?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. This is one, actually, that we, we were continuing some work on the Z21 zoning initiative. And it was an item that came up around how we want to handle this right now, the, neither our current code or the proposed code. The, neither our current code or the proposed code allows for any digital signage. So this would be electronic signage. So we wanted, what we wanted to do is just kind of bring it back for discussion here to understand, you know, what direction do we want to take? One, with the, the model code that we have that we're, we're working to finalize and bring back to council. Do we want to include it or exclude it in there? Because this is a, you know, a fairly significant item that we wanted to discuss. And I know Ms. Randall and Mr. Stewart are here as well. And when I think about it, you know, I know there's, we're, here in the 21st century, it seems digital signage is, uh, other than that, I was, I would think would be more common, not completely excluded. Certainly, I think there's certain restrictions that we could put around that, but just the whole idea of someone having to get out and, and, and take the letters on a ladder and, and manually put them on seems to be a thing of decades ago when it's not necessarily needed any longer. I actually think the digital signage looks much better than, than the, than these old analog type signs. I don't know what the right word to call them is, but the automatic changeable copy. So, just wanted to take, look for some input, see what those, what those were. Emmy, do you have any comments on it?
I have a couple of questions, Gary. Do you have, I mean, is it the idea, and I've actually been involved in litigation involving digital signs? So, is, and I haven't seen the model that's being proposed by the Z21. Is there any regulation on the digital sign? Or is it digital sign where you can have full film and movie on it?
The, the current one is no digital sign at all.
Right, that's what I mean. But what is being proposed?
Well, that's what, that's what I wanted to, you know, just have some conversation around what kind of standards and things might we want to put in there? I think when I, with some involvement at St. Henry, when they put that one in, they were limited to monochrome, you know, no, no full color displays. And then obviously, a frequency of timings that it doesn't become a distraction. So you can't change it, you know, every, you know, five seconds.
Because I know there have been cities that have allowed full digital, and the problem is, it starts looking like the Las Vegas Strip, right? Where it's like you have full movies being played on signs. So, the only thing I would just be careful of is just the liability that that opens up if you have that much of an attractive nuisance. Are you, are you kind of, explain the, the Walgreens sign? Is that kind of what you were looking to propose? Or you, like, the sign next door here that just made is more of a movie style, I guess. You can play videos.
I, I guess I'm not familiar with that sign, so.
That's why I put that up. So this is just, right, Mark? That's their digital sign that they have up on Dixie Highway, and it just, you know, you can change the signage there. As opposed to what Jack was saying, you know, the full video ones where they can play movies and clips and stuff like that.
So.
Is this what we're, this is what we allow now?
No, these, this was actually grandfathered in.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
This is not.
I guess, can you show us something about what he, what, what you want to change it to? Or what you would allow, what we would allow? I'm having a hard time visualizing. Sorry. I'm just having a hard time visualizing what, what we, what we allow now and what would be allowed.
Currently, right now, you want to bring the Walgreens back up?
There's just so many different kinds of digital signs that it's hard for me to keep them all straight.
Well, the, the bottom one was just recently placed by Walgreens. Um, the, one they had before that was, they got permits for, just wore out and they needed to replace it. So this is a full color digital sign that everybody's going to, or wanting to go to now. The one that is in front of, the Methodist Church is all red, the monochrome, like Mr. Meyer was saying, for St. Henry's. And then there's the one for Accutex is also monochrome, the, the orange-yellow color. Those are kind of the old-fashioned LED now, two years later, but. It's just in 2008, and I think this was, this one and four other ones were along Dixie Highway were permitted in 2000, before 2008, when, when 2008, the sign regulations changed and no longer permitted digital signs. And actually, even the, the old-fashioned analog signs. The new ordinance that were, that Mr. Meyer and I and Ms. Randall are working on to bring to you guys for the next generation does now allow this type of sign, the, the automatic at all. It only allows the old-fashioned analog signs. So, but we're at a point now that we can, council can put input in, like, no, we want to change that to allow that. So when they pass that new zoning ordinance, it's all taken care of. We don't have to do a text amendment or anything like that. Or we can do a text amendment for our current one if the new ordinance is going to take a while to pass, so. So this is what, um, we've had one business that wants to do this now, this year, and currently they can't. So we just want to keep council's feelings, they wanted to do something like this along Dixie Highway in the, at Neighborhood Commercial Zone, which is where this other business wants to put it in. Or any, obviously, we put in regulations. I know, like, like Mr. Meyer said, there is the frequency amount that changes this thing. There's a brightness level. We could definitely put in some stuff that only is for advertising, not playing movies. You know, we can do all kinds, council can put in those kind of regulations to limit the attractive nuisance that Las Vegas or Times Square has. Unless we want to be Times Square of the Midwest, you know, whatever. Whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, and then I guess the thing that I'll add there, we're only talking about Dixie Highway corridor. Because that's our, there, there is one other small spot that's Neighborhood Commercial, but that's predominantly it.
That helps, thank you. I just have a hard time visualizing the different kinds of signs and which one exactly you were referring to, but I, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Technical? Yes, ma'am.
And this in no way would obligate, like, all businesses to go to digital, right? They're allowed to, if the cottage wants to continue their, their signs, which I love, like, then that's what they would do, right? This is, doesn't obligate any businesses to go to digital?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
This is if they choose to do it, like Walgreens did back in 2000, like this new business wants to do this year, they have the opportunity to. But no, we're not, zoning doesn't force anybody to do anything. Oh, God, I want to.
So I guess another thing that I'll add is, part of the reason that this has come up, well, obviously, there was a business that wants to do it. We know that we've got some things to address for, in relation to the Z21 initiative. Our goal right now is hopefully, in the April caucus meeting, to actually bring the first draft of that to council for, for input and comment before we actually push forward with applying to KCPC for the, the text and map amendments.
And I guess my only count would be is obviously, we have to be content neutral with, even with the digital sign. So, I, I think if you wanted to, if council wanted to limit movies being played, which I think probably would be a wise move. I, I think you would just probably limit the, how often the screen could change. Like, maybe the screen can only change every 60 seconds or every 90 seconds. So the idea is you could have rotating still ads and not live ads.
Right.
Because if you make it for just commercial purposes, I could see someone just running the commercial up there, right? Like, they're just going to have constantly running their veterinary commercial or whatever. I mean.
That would be a good.
I would, if I were a business and I had an opportunity to put a digital sign up and just run a commercial on it all the time. Then I'd get loudspeakers and I'd just play that commercial as people are driving by.
Not in Erlanger, please.
It wouldn't be a nuisance.
No.
Be my First Amendment right.
Not in Erlanger. Okay.
Yeah, so I guess I'll, I'll ask the question. Is there, is just a general sense that we want to do something with digital signage and put some limitations in there? Seeing a few hands and the heads nodding, okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes our agenda. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. Be careful on your way home.